Yeah, Erica, I don't... Do we have... Do we all have the paper for the special meeting?
We have it.
Okay. Councilman Kim does not... All right, we'll get underway in 30 seconds. Can we proceed, Councilman Kim, and then she's going to get you the paper? You have one, John?
I'm waiting for one.
Okay.
I think she did. It didn't print it. He got it.
All right, we're set now. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council, Colletzco Community Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency, Colletzco Financing Authority, Special Meeting, December 3rd approximately. We're running a little late, 6:08. Okay, call to order and attendance, looking from my right and my left, everyone is here. And for the special meeting, once again, let's honor our country and our flag. Please Honorable Ben Horton, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Will you mind shutting the doors in the back there? Thank you. Okay, and can... May I have a motion to approve this special meeting?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Pro Tem Moreno. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Castro. Thank you very much. Electronically, we're ready to go, so please vote on the approval of this agenda. One item. Okay, the approval is unanimous. Now, we come to the part of public appearances and public comments also are involved in this special meeting. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, not to exceed three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the council on any item appearing on this special meeting agenda that is within the subject matter, jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. So for the special meeting, I have not received... I don't believe so. I have not received any white slips, but we'll still be open to it. Is there anyone that wants to come forward for public comments regarding this business item, the special meeting? (music playing) A little sound background. Okay, nobody. All right, very good. Okay, then let's move on. This is a business item, the approval of a resolution of the city council, the city of Colletzco approving the trust agreement, assignment agreement, the lease agreement, the project lease, and the continuing disclosure agreement in connection with the Colletzco Financing Authority Measure H sales tax lease revenue bonds issue of 2013 and taking certain other actions and connections thereof. So before we vote...
Mr. Hodge?
I don't have any memos. The memos were given to you guys.
You don't? Okay, please. Councilman Kim needs...
I think Mr. Castro didn't.
Okay, Councilman Castro, you don't have this either, sir.
No.
On the wording. Okay. We need the memo that has the revised wording on the bond issuance. Apologize to both of you councilmembers. Do we wait or proceed, sir? I have it.
Let me see it.
Yeah.
Three.
Three.
Eric.
And a lawyer for five.
Five. Make it five.
I'd like to invite you to the lighting of the Christmas tree. That's this Thursday. What time is it, city manager? 5 o'clock. I'd like to see all of you there getting ready for Christmas. Hope to see you at Grand Plaza, shopping. Gentlemen, we know you're always in a uniform, but boy, they got Perry Ellis there, okay? Looking very sharp, just trying to fill in time. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, you have a mayor that has a sense of humor. What is that?
They're not laughing, Mr. Mayor.
I know, but I like my own sense of humor. I'm not trying to be egotistical. Okay, we're waiting for three copies. I just have this impulse to ask, does anybody have a joke? But I know that's inappropriate. You have a joke? Okay. John, you're good at jokes.
Not now.
My God, he doesn't take anything serious. Say another talk. This silence kills me. I want to wish each and every one of you happy holidays, be with your family, Merry Christmas. I'd like a raise a hand. How many of you have at least four children in your family? Mark, really? You do? Anybody have five? You're going to have to get an extra job to pay Who are more expensive, boys or girls? Girls. Yeah, yeah, no, we've gone over this. Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, we've belabored and beaten this puppy.
Like nobody's business.
Mayor Pro Tem. Like that, maybe? How about Fast Times at Richmond?
Oh, yeah.
But those two are classics.
Yeah.
Jeff Spicoli, man. Austin, Ray Austin. Oh, he goes to his house. Whoa, dude. Thank you, Erica. All I did, I have one right here, right? This is the memo, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Sorry for the inconvenience and the wait, but every council member has a right to have this memo. Okay, so I've read the business item that we have for today's meeting, and let me begin before we vote. I don't want to belabor this. I think three minutes max would be appropriate for anybody that wants to make a comment. We didn't have any public comments, so we're going to move on. Okay, but allow me to explain what has proceeded, what has unfolded here. Ladies and gentlemen, yesterday, we had a meeting, a dialogue with key stakeholders, and obviously, the project, the main priority is the fire department, and then right behind them, the police department and parks and the pool. And the meeting was very productive, and we came to an agreement on specific wording, the specific amount of monies that would be designated for key interest groups or projects. So indulge me, and I will read the memo so that we are all clear about what it says. This is the new language on the bonds, and it states, "It is the intent of the city council to use bond proceeds to build capital projects throughout the city. The number-one priority project of the city council is to build a new headquarter fire station. The city council will allocate $7 million of bond proceeds to acquire land, design, and to construct the fire facility. Work on the station will commence as soon as bond proceeds are available." Next paragraph. "In addition to the fire station, the city will set aside $2 million in bond proceeds for various park and other recreational improvements, and another $2 million to fund the city's share of joint school district city swimming pool project. Of equal importance to the above-listed projects is the design, land acquisition, and construction of a new police facility. The city is committed to construction of a said committee facility and will allocate up to $5 million from a second series of sales tax revenue bond to be issued within the next 24 months." Now, I think anybody has any questions, or you have a right to get this memo, but I said it word-for-word. But after the meeting last night, in the evening, I felt a little unsettled. I realized that we had not considered... These were the main stakeholders, the park, the pool, the fire department, the police department. But I had not... I had really not considered the most important stakeholder, and that's you, the public. And then today, I don't know, as if telepathy or thinking right along with it, I was very pleased to hear that Councilwoman Hurtado wanted the same thing, and what we are advocating at this point, and she brought it up, and I totally agree, is a public meeting to include the public, to have a choice, to make a voice over this exact wording, so that the voice of the people can be heard regarding this newly accepted bond proposal that will focus, as stated, on fire department, parks, pool, and in 24 months, a new police station. So to the stakeholders here, let me make this clear, let me be clear. What we agreed on yesterday, unless you heard otherwise, or you didn't like what you heard, this is what we're going to vote on, okay? But permit us to have another week. Permit us to have a public meeting next Wednesday would be appropriate, all right, to allow the public to get their input. But this exact proposal will not change, and so next Wednesday, we will vote on it, okay? There's only a minor delay, and I think it's just to be truly democratic and have a public meeting. No later than a week from... or next Wednesday.
Mr. Hodge?
Okay?
I have a question.
Councilman Kim?
I have a question. This memo is saying is $50... $5 million, we're going to issue another bond?
Yes, that's what it says.
So after $12 million bond issued, in 24 months, we're going to issue another bond?
That's what it says, sir, yes, for the police department.
Wow.
Okay. All right. Is there any other comments on this? Okay, then. Yes, Councilman Castro?
This is what I see it, the way I see it. This is the third... How do you say it?
Revision?
Revision. The... I mean, we started, first of all, with $12 million, 12... 12-point-something, right? 12... Well, $12 million, we started on the last council meeting. And then, after that, we had a special meeting for another petition from the administration.
That is correct, sir.
Right? And this is the third one?
Yes, it is, sir.
Right?
Yes.
So I believe for the administration, I believe this is the... How do you call that? The fair one, the correct one, or... I mean, how many... How many changes are we going to...
May I interject, sir?
From the majority of the council?
Yes, may I interject?
Because this is the third time?
Yes, may I interject. There will be no more changes. All we're going to do is, next Wednesday, invite the public and allow them to read this and allow them to give their input about fire department, pools, parks, where the money is going, sir, and police department.
Why we need to wait two years in order to get $5 million for the police department? Can you explain that?
I'll defer to city manager, Oscar Rodriguez. He has a good question. Why do we need to wait 24 months?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, in that discussion that was held at the meeting yesterday, there was an issue that was talked about priorities and what was the top priorities.
Right.
And off of that whole discussion, the issue was, they're all priorities, but you have to define which ones are going to come first because you only have a certain amount of money. And so, I know that there's been a lot of conversation at almost every meeting we've had about parks, and what are we doing to our parks? And the conversation took place that, here's an opportunity to take care of our parks. We keep getting beat over the head every meeting about what we're not doing with our parks, and here's an opportunity to take care of our parks. So we felt that... The group felt that that was important, that that ranked up there after the fire department. Then the discussion turned to a pool, and you know, what are we doing about taking care of our youth and our seniors, and what are we going to do about that? And so, the discussion took place, and there was an issue that, okay, that maybe should be another priority and should come after that.
And it's a new wording here, sir.
And then the discussion turned to the police department, and what are we going to do about that? And the issue was, it is a priority also, but you know, we can't do everything all at once because we only have a certain amount of money. And so, the issue was, okay, as we move forward with additional revenue coming in because of Grand Plaza and the monies that we've estimated, and so far, it looks like we're going to be on target, hopefully, that that would raise a certain amount of money, and that within the next 24 months, there should be enough revenue stream to be able to capitalize.
So the 24 months is because we actually need to be fair and wait for that money to come in?
In order to bond, because you can only bond so much.
And it's roughly about 24 months. If we did it earlier, we wouldn't have that money.
Yeah, it would take... We're figuring about 24 months. It could happen earlier, depending on how the revenue flows.
Will you repeat for Councilman Castro again, what revenue you're referring to?
That is the sales tax coming out of Grand Plaza, the new money that's coming off of that. Okay, in 24 months, we would hope that in February...
If you do it in 12, I would be happier, but I understand your point.
And that doesn't mean we can't start working on the project. That doesn't mean we can't start doing an RFQ and trying to... You know, the land being cited, and that, you know, plans and specs cannot be drawn up. That's going to take time. So we can get to that point, to the point that we are prepared, so that when the revenue stream is there to be able to bond for the money, that we are prepared to go out to bid on the project.
All right.
So that doesn't mean we can't start doing some of those things now.
Good.
It just means we can't go out to bid until we have the money, obviously.
All right. Well, I'd like to see that as soon as possible.
And the idea is that, obviously, we've seen with Grand Plaza what it's done, and we're hoping, not we're hoping, by February, the rest of the stores will be in. That's another 30% of the stores that are coming in. So if this thing goes as planned, we will have the revenue stream within those 24 months to be able to bond, to provide the money, and hopefully, at that point, we're ready to go to go out to bid for the police station, which we will make room in the area that we're buying to put the fire station in.
Okay.
I hope that is clear.
I understand. Councilman Castro, you may not disagree, but do you understand what he's saying?
Yes, I understand. But also, I don't have no backup, how much is going to be the interest, and for how long, how many years this bond is going to be.
Good insight.
Okay, Mr. Lynn?
We have only two papers.
Okay. I want to take a break.
Mr. Lynn, can you come up? The question was asked... Mr. Marshall Lynn, of course, with Urban Futures, Inc., is our financial advisor. The question was, what are we estimating the interest rate to be, and for how long will the term of the bonds be?
Mr. Castro, the next bond issue will be in 24 months, and I really cannot give you the balanced guess of what the interest rate will possibly be, it's so far off into the future. The term of the bonds, I think you only have 16 more years to run, better rates, so half the balance, half 11 years, which term, which to pay back the bond, approximately $5 million. But what the interest rate will be, I'm hoping this can be done in the vines. I just can't... I just don't know. In fact, there's nobody in this room that knows.
But see, that's kind of scary when you say that. So it could balloon up, right?
Well, when we look back at it characteristically, when we look back historically, what happened in the interest rate, I think the comment that I made yesterday, going to bond that much, what's occurred two years, is a valid assumption. I think the question was exactly what will be the interest rate. I would guess, again, the interest rate will be 45%.
Okay.
It's a natural rate, because I think it's pretty much normal. It'll be able to accomplish both of that.
All right.
Was a question also as to the bond issue that we're releasing now, what the interest rate is going to be? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes.
Okay, so that was a question.
The bond issue that we're looking at now...
$7 million.
Again, Mr. Castro, the interest rate is not set until you actually go out and weigh. We're looking for right now probably a... For like accurate, depends on what the market will be. We're looking at true interest cost, really the way that we've got away with a bond issue. You have two bond bonds, ranging anywhere from 2.5% for the early years to 5.5 for the later years. So really, there's never anyone who's booked, the true interest cost of the bond issue, 4.935.
And how many... For how many years?
This will be for a period of...
16? I believe it's 16.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Were you done, Mr. Castro?
I don't know.
Yes, let me...
Let him finish, Mayor Pro Tem.
The answer.
He's waiting for the answer. The suspense is heightening.
Mr. Castro, in terms of the bond age, the term of the bond will be for 16 years.
16 years?
Yes, 16, right?
16, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes.
No, I mean, Councilman...
For me, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've discussed this a couple of times before.
Yes, we have.
And we're discussing it now. I'm not sure what the rationale is to prolong this to another public meeting. This is a public meeting, is it not?
Looks like one.
So why are we going to prolong it till next Wednesday for yet another public meeting?
Why we change the wording? This is the third time that the administration changed the wording of the project.
Excuse me. Okay, all right, let Mayor Pro Tem speak.
So I just... I want to hear the rationale as to why we're going to move to change it to another meeting.
All right. I gave rationale, maybe, but it also was an idea of Councilwoman Hurtado. Would you like to speak on that?
May I?
May I?
I have a question first from Legal. When looking at this memo, how is this information or these clauses going to be interjected? Is this actually going to be adapted into the actual agreement itself, or will this be an attachment to the other agreement?
I'm not bond counsel. I don't draft... I don't work on these documents, haven't worked on them. It would be bond counsel that would need to answer that.
Yes.
I don't think they're going to be integrated, right?
I'm being informed that it will be in the documents with the preliminary offering statement and into the final offering statement.
So this exact... What we're doing today by looking at this memo is considering the content of the memo, that this content of this memo then would become a permanent part of the structure of what it is that you're developing for the bond documents?
That's correct.
Which it doesn't contain it right now, but if this were to be agreed to, this then would be contained in that documentation?
That's it.
That's correct.
Because a memo itself is probably not binding, I guess what I'm asking is...
The actual language of the memo will be included in the POS, which is the offering document that's sent out to the member club that buys these bonds, similar to category of the project. The... What it does, it gives the bond holders an idea of what money will be spent for. Basically, you have categories, we call parks, prioritated.
It's specified.
The city council then pretty much sets policy. The third priority of the product that you will build will be prioritized.
That's right.
You also put everybody, and notice that if we come back every month, we do a series B tail attack bond to build the police department.
Okay, I think that it's easy to clarify what has happened. There was a focus from Measure H to have this bonding happen, to rebuild the fire station. And meanwhile, all of that was occurring, there were new demands that put pressure on this amount of bonding. And it made it complicated because there was no longer than the exact vision that we had had in the beginning as far as Measure H's vision. And the reason why we've been coming back here is because of those other demands that were within these circumstances, and those other demands cannot be handled with just one bond. So I move for its approval with the memo, and so long as the memo is what is going to be contained in the agreement.
I'll second. All right.
Mr. Hodge? Do you know how much we have a bond, we have in the balance? Only tax allocation bond, we have a $43 million balance right now.
All right, sir.
And last 11 years, we issued $33 million bond.
We talked about it.
Now, without bond, we should have...
You have two minutes, sir, to continue.
Okay.
Okay, I respect what you're saying. Are you through?
And like last time I explained it, we swimming pool, we issued the $1.8 million swimming pools, the bond, we received only $1.2 million cash. $600,000 gone for someplace else. And we have to end up paying the debt $33.7 million. That's our council creating the debt for the future. Why we don't have money? Because the last 11 years, they've been creating the bond and bond and debt and debt. Right now, we end up paying all the debts right now. That's why we don't have money. So we have to keep careful with the issue of the bond. And also, they're talking about issuing another bond, $5 million bond. There's no guarantee. Unfortunately, they might not going to be able to... Council members are going to be that time. And not only that. Why we creating debt and debt? Why don't we go other way dealing without the debt? We can go for the lease to own. Or really, if we have to issue the bond, why don't we to issue the bond with the $10 million with the police together? But the condition of the... We're going to pre-approve with the interest rate and the fees to clearly, before we finalizing the bond, we can make the final decision how much money we're talking about it. So we have to be careful for the community. We were talking about stakeholders meeting. There is no stakeholders meeting because the majority of stakeholders is community. It's community excluded. I believe that we are representing the community, and we have to let the community know, or we have to listen to communities. A community is saying, is Colletzco yearly, they're running down instead of progressing. I have received an email to about 10 years in Colletzco, they are disappointing it.
Time.
Okay, so we have to do... We have to cautiously to...
A call for the question, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, hold on. His time is up. Okay, your time.
You see, he doesn't want to let the public know.
Let me take the lead there, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilman Kim, your time is up, sir. Okay.
I repeat my motion.
All right, repeat the motion.
Motion for its approval, so long as the memo that we are looking at here that indicates this language be interjected into the new bonding documentation.
That's absolutely correct. That's absolutely correct.
And I would like to also maybe clarify that last couple of words there on the last paragraph that says, "within the next 24 months." Is it after 24 months? Or because "within" can mean next month? Or, because within can mean next month.
Within, I like within, Ben.
So it could go up to 24, depending on when the revenue comes in to be the bond.
Whatever's realistic. Giving, giving the opportunity for our, our monies that should be coming in of all goals, well, from our new project, to look at the numbers and evaluate what that could handle.
Correct, because we don't know what those numbers are.
I think that's fair.
But within, keep it.
So I read my motion.
All right, and there is a second by Mayor Pro Tem. Ladies and gentlemen, please vote finally on this item. Okay, it's been a rough road. Finally, it is approved. 3-2. The dissent is... Okay, now they gotta go, see? They're right away. Kim and Castro. All right, any, that's it?
Mayor, if I, let me add the action of the agency from the other side of the council, if you are going to approve the bond issue tonight...
Yes.
...the law, there is a revolution, a formal revolution to be approved by the council, the council, a formal revolution to be approved by the financial authority. Is that on the...
Oh.
That's item number on the consent agenda.
That we are not doing tonight.
It was my understanding that the motion was to add this language to the bond docs, but the idea would be to come back for final approval of the actual resolution in the bond documents at the future meeting.
So tonight is just adding the language?
To the bond documentation, so that it can be brought back in final form to the council with the resolution, the bond docs, to reflect this information.
Okay, all right, we have to do the right thing. City manager?
Yes.
Oh, you were gonna...
I was gonna add something.
Are we fine? Okay, then, so what we've just voted on is this new revision and to incorporate it into the bonding documents.
Okay, so just make sure that I understand, so then when the council adjourns, classes are adjourned, you're going to, you're adjourned to a class for next week for approval of the final bond document.
Yeah, in a resolution form.
Well, we'll just set up a special meeting. We don't need to adjourn to any, we just set up the special meeting depending on when the council is available.
All right, my God, let's, yeah, let's do this, okay? All right, thank you. All right, do you understand, Councilwoman Hurtado? Okay, all right, this special meeting is adjourned at 6:39.